Good morning. It's nine o'clock, February 24th, 2014. It's Monday. This is the committee meeting. If you'll please rise. Father, we thank you for the privilege of gathering together as free people to determine our own government. I pray that you watch over us and bless us. I pray that the words that we speak and the thoughts that we think are acceptable in your sight, in Jesus' name and for his sake. Come in. Mr. Cole, will you leave some pledge?
If you will, please take a moment to silence your cell phones. Before we move into the agenda, I'll begin on my right. Commissioner Cole, I mean Commissioner Salter, do you have any additions?
No additions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole?
No additions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lanchard?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker? Attorney, engineering, budget, all right. First on the agenda is Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items. First is discussion of allocation of $41,000 from Economic Development Reserves, enabling MediaCom to extend fiber optic capabilities in the Santa Rosa Industrial Park. You've got some good backup information in the book. Primarily, this will be able to help us to be able to provide a more competitive environment for the Santa Rosa Industrial Park and to further assist the companies located there for a lot of reasons, high-speed internet, those type things. This was actually approved back on October the 13th, 2011, but because of the changes that we went through with economic development, it got put on hold. So, we're bringing it back again to seek approval. Any questions? Here and none, I would recommend moving this to Thursday without objection.
Here and none, it passes.
Number two, discussion of following incentives for project parts. A precision manufacturing operation creating 17 jobs with wages exceeding 150 percent of average county income. First request is for Santa Rosa County Super QTI designation in the amount of $800 per FTE per year for a five-year period at cost not to exceed $68,000. Here again, you have backup. This is a program we started a few years ago to make us more competitive. Any questions? Here and none, I would recommend moving this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Are you going to deal with the rebate of tangible personal property? Is that part of your?
I'm going to get to that one.
Okay. Here and none, it passes.
I should have included both of them. Anyway, the second part of that is rebate of tangible personal property for a five-year period estimated at $19,943 over a five-year period. And here again, this is for project parts. Any questions? Here and none, I would recommend moving this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
It passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Next is Administrative Committee, and there are 13 items. Item number one is discussion of a contract with Charter Bank NA for a site proposed judicial facility located on US 90 West of Avalon Boulevard. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, in your packets, kind of the first run at the contract with Charter Bank. At your last meeting, the board had selected this site. We still have, now we have, we have actually three alternatives for how to lay out the site. There were the two that you see on the, that outline, a site closest to the road, if you will, then the second site that is, is, is back to the north is possible, is it can go, that's the second site that has two out parcels in the front. And then the third site was that Commissioner Cole mentioned at the Thursday meeting two weeks ago. And, and this, this is the schematic put together by the county's engineering consultants on that. And each one shows the total, the total cost of the project and outlines the, at least the opinion of probable construction cost and, and estimate of how much the project, the acquisition cost would be for the three. And so, that's.
Questions from the board? And just comments from the public. While Mr. Cooley's coming forward, Mr. Walker, I would appreciate it if you would make up a slideshow for Thursday so the public can see what we're looking at with each of the three locations and the, yeah. Okay, when you brief that, it would. Mr. Cooley, name and address.
Jerry Cooley, 6049 Arnie's Way. I think as a, as a citizen, we've all watched the ebb and flow of this situation. I'd certainly hoped that this board would have, would have come to a different decision. My, my feelings are that East Milton was eliminated from this process way too early. And my other feeling is that you're going to be hard pressed to pass a sales tax and purchase more property. The citizens in this county still remember the $3.2 million Pullum property that we purchased that we've done nothing with. I think you've had other speakers that have come forward during this process that have, that have taken the same position that I'm taking today. I really think you need to rethink this and reconsider East Milton for this location. Now, one additional thing that I want to say about this is we had some issues in the 2006 tax event. We used the county building to facilitate a political action committee. We had a county administrator that actively solicited funds, and we used taxpayer money to pay for part of, a part of that. I just want to make sure we're clear on the rules of engagement, and that is, any ballot measure belongs to the citizens of Santa Rosa County, and the Board of County Commissioners is not supposed to participate in advocating. I would trust that Mr. Walker clearly understands at this time around that emails are going to be watched very carefully, because I for one am not going to put up with some of the emails and some of the things that transpired the last time, where we're making sure certain people are taken care of because they made a donation to the political action committee. Okay? So, let's make sure, there's no need for you to shake your head, no, Mr. Walker. We showed you the email. All right?
I'll be responsible for, I'll be responsible for the emails I send and how I conduct myself, but I promise you, I will be a fan and in favor of getting this passed. So, the county desperately needs it, and, and I'll be responsible.
That's fine. I'm not in a disagreement with us needing a courthouse, but I'm in disagreement of buying more property. With 3.3, 3.6 million dollars, cost, cost keeps going up, and I want this board to seriously, seriously think about it. It's not too late at this point. East Milton needs to be put back in, into play here. You know, I can't, I can't stand for this. I've had enough of my tax dollars buying property that certain folks can't sell, but, but we seem to be a willing participant. And whatever's necessary for me to stop this, and, and I'm quite certain that members of the judicial will be listening to this, let me make my position clear. I want a new courthouse in Santa Rosa County, but I cannot stand for buying another piece of property when we already own many, 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 many acres. And whatever becomes necessary for me as a citizen, there's pretty effective yellow sign with black lettering on it that defeated two sales taxes. If that's what becomes necessary for me to live out on the side of the road for the next six months to stop it, I will. I want you guys to reconsider. We, we continue to get promises of, let's, let's look at the whole picture. And what I saw was a very, very quick elimination of East Milton on property that we own. Like I said, I want us to have a new courthouse. I have, as a citizen, I don't disagree with that. What I vehemently disagree with is buying more property when we have some, and especially on the tails of a Pullum property. Four years and eight months, we've owned it, and we've done nothing with it, $3.2 million. I don't believe there's an appetite of the citizens of Santa Rosa County to pass your sales tax if you go buy property. You know, I've listened to people that have come up here, and I've been in the community. You're not going to get your sales tax passed if you buy additional property. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cooley? Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Salter, I mean Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate the comments there, and I appreciate the fact that everybody's realizing that we do need a judicial center. I, I'm, I've never taken East Milton off the board. You've heard me say that. You've also seen me for probably, you know, 11 years since I've been sitting up here, you know, trying to push that ball up or stone up a hill. It didn't happen. I've still not given up on East Milton as a potential site. I've told that to Codwell Banker, that we have an offer of property in East Milton for Mr. Cotton. We also own property in East Milton. We've come to this point now, and, and the lowest price so far I'm seeing in our review here is about $652,000. My intention is that we need to talk to the bank or the developer, because, you know, you put out a, we're looking at a number here of total estimated cost of, you know, three, three, five million dollars. But I would hope you'd agree with me that the fact that site work, storm water, sanitary sewage water, those things are given at any location. You can't, you just can't plop it down without those. So, when we back all that out and start talking property cost just for the dirt, we're looking at, the site that I like on the backside of this is $652,000. The other two sites are a million and three and, and $840,000, open close to the front. That's the reason I like to move to the back of the property. But the next step for me, and I believe staff at this point, is to come to a realization with, with the bank, with the developer, that this other, you know, you subtract, let's say subtract the 652,000 out of 3,500, let's round it down to about 2,008,000 for, for development cost. That's a given. Anywhere we go, that's a given. Would you agree with me on that?
I don't disagree that there will be infrastructure costs. It's the simple fact of buying more property when we own property.
Let me get there. I'm trying to, I'm trying to break this down. So, you know, the public is looking at what you said, and what we have here is bottom line of 3,500,000. That's not the cost of buying a property, and I want to clarify that to the press, I want to clarify that to the viewers, I want to clarify that to the citizens. You know, and I don't like the fact that that's what this piece of paper says, but I think we can all agree that anywhere we go, free property, county property we own, this property, if we'd have chose Avalon, anywhere we'd have gone, there'd have been that infrastructure development cost.
I, I don't disagree with that. The, the other issue that, since we're going to talk about it here, is traffic. Keep hearing about traffic, traffic, traffic.
All right, let's, let's stay on where I'm at right now, and then I'll, we'll talk about that. I want to get it down and clear that those are the three costs of the pieces of the property at that location. Let's just, let's just focus on that right now. My intention now is for staff to go to the, go to the bank. Hopefully, I'll get board support, and they will like the piece on the back because it's the lowest of cost and helps develop that frontage. If we go to them and say, "Look, we're leaving you the frontage to develop. We're putting in $2.8 million worth of infrastructure to that piece of property to get to our judicial center." If you can't realize the worth that has on your balance of your property and basically give us title to that 15 acres and, and see how that will make your balance grow for you, because my thoughts are, is that if we put this facility on that acreage, on that back, their balance of, say, 25 acres will be worth three times what the 50 acres is worth today. And if they can't realize that, then I'm not interested in spending money either on it. That's kind of, that's my thoughts and where I'd like to go to, but we have to keep getting to that point where we can go to them and say, I've told them, I said, "If, if we can't be prudent in this part of this process," I agree 100% with you. If we cannot be prudent in this part of this process and show our citizens that we got this piece of property at a very valuable price, nothing, I hope, because of, like I said, the infrastructure we're going to develop, then I agree. I don't think we'll get a sales tax pushed through. So, that's why we're having this meeting. That's why I'm saying what I'm saying, because I'm, I'm not taking East Milton off the map, but the other board members aren't in agreement with me, you, and several other people that want to go to East Milton, and I could see a lot of the points as to why not. I can also see a lot of the points as to why too. But this is where we're at today. This is where this boards came to today, and this is where I'd like to take this to now.
Share with us who owns a piece of property that you're advocating now, the back piece? Who owns it?
Codwell Banker owns this piece of property.
The one that's off of Highway 90?
Correct. That's, that's, I don't know of any other owner other than Codwell Banker. People have a sign on it.
Okay.
To me, that's another positive. We're not buying it from an individual. We're buying it from the bank. Who buys that from the bank and maybe before we do and invest in that as an investor? I have no idea, but as far as I know right now, that, that piece of property is owned by Codwell Banker.
Well, I, I stand by what I said. The citizens aren't going to take too well to buying more property.
Well, that's where I want to go with that.
The, the issue of traffic. There is no fix for Highway 98, or for, for Highway 90. We know that. It's no different than, than Highway 98. Avalon, if you will notice, that as the four-laning is being commenced, we will see more and more housing developments on there. And, and if you look at DOT numbers, you'll see that, that Avalon will have traffic problems in another four, four to five years. However, what is in the pipeline is a fix for traffic problems for downtown Milton. It's been discussed. It's been through several DOT meetings. I don't know if I'm going to agree with what they wind up doing, but a, there will be a bypass around Highway 90, which will alleviate that traffic issue before any, before Avalon or Highway 90 ever sees any improvements. You're going to have, you're going to have it there. But bottom line, you know, I'm standing before you today, asking you all to reconsider. It's, it's going to be very, it's going to be very difficult to, to pass a sales tax if you buy a property. That, that's the bottom line. I, I'm a guy standing here before you today that's gone out and asked people about, and as soon as you, as soon as they discuss that their tax dollars is buying property for this, that's it.
Mr. Stewart, may I interrupt you with a question?
Sure.
Ms. Jones, would you please check? The issue of concurrency was raised several months ago, and question was, was raised about whether or not we could, even though concurrency isn't forced upon us in some issues, it will possibly be for a courthouse. Can you resolve that for us by Thursday, or do you know the answer to that now?
We are not required to meet traffic, traffic concurrency. It is not part of our plan. That doesn't mean we can't consider traffic counts and traffic on a road in, in making our decisions, but concurrency is not an issue.
So, if we decided to, for whatever reason, to go to East Milton and avail ourselves of one of those three pieces of property, the piece that Cotton Byram owns, the piece that is in the, the Pullum property or the other piece, the state wouldn't be on our neck about concurrency?
You're correct.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up. Go ahead, Mr. Cooley. I apologize.
I, I'm just asking. I'm just asking. The wisest decision is to put East Milton back in it, and don't sign a contract yet. And I know you're getting ready to do that, and I, I'm very uncomfortable at this point. You know, I'm okay with the courthouse, but buying property is going to be a problem for you guys, and I, I just felt like it needed to be said this morning. Appreciate your time.
Commissioner Salter?
Mr. Chairman, from day one, we've talked about what is our goal? What should be our focus? And that should be build a courthouse at the most economical way possible for all the citizens of Santa Rosa County. And I'm afraid we're losing focus of that. To the average person who really doesn't understand the property in East Milton, that was purchased for industrial growth. People keep talking about the Pullum property. That piece of property has emerged as being one of the highest rated potential industrial sites in the two, three county area. To put a $40 million facility in East Milton with a condition of Highway 90, as it stands today, and we all see the new bridge being replaced across, by Marcus, Marcus, the bridge being replaced. That's going to be a mess, and it's going to be a long time. And then we're going to come along later, and you're going to start thinking about, hopefully, it's only been 25 years, we've been trying to get the Blackwater Bridge replaced, so we're looking probably at another 20 to 25 years before you see Highway 90 with the bridges four-laned. To me, it makes absolutely no sense to make a $35 to $40 million investment where you absolutely have some of the worst infrastructure in Santa Rosa County as far as the traveling public. So, I will continue to support the Highway 90 site as it stands today. I've had people to come up to me and say, "Don't put it in East Milton." One lady spoke out in the little local newspaper. She said it makes about as much sense to put the courthouse in East Milton as it does in Shamakla. I mean, we could put it in a lot of different places, but it's not centrally located, and you don't have the adequate infrastructure. So, that's what I'm basing my opinion on. Where can you put it that serves the most people with adequate infrastructure? So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Come forward, name and address for the record, please.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90, East Milton, Florida. I live in East Milton, and I travel past vacant land every day I come into Milton. If I have to go over to the Walmart area, the shopping area, I, every day, I hate going there because of all the traffic. And when I see you wanting to add something else to increase the traffic over there rather than a place that would, to me, seem to be centrally located, the intersection of Highway 87, 90, and 10, that area in there seems to me to be available to all the people in the county. It would be easy to get to and from. You won't have to go down through Milton, and having one lane of traffic in and out of Milton with logging trucks makes it, I don't understand why we do that. It's been a long time since we've had horse and buggies to have a little bit of traffic there, but all the increase in traffic since they opened up the prison, it's unreal. And last, two weeks ago, when they closed down Highway or Interstate 10 because of the bridges being iced over, my front yard was a parking lot. I mean, there were tractor trailers and cars backed up for miles and miles on Highway 90, just because of the closing of Interstate 10. You all need to do something about the traffic regardless of where the judicial center goes. You need to do something about the traffic. Highway 87 was improved up to Interstate 10. What, what about north of Highway 90 for Highway 87, rather than going through Milton, going straight up from there? Look at something like that. What about the funding for the judicial center? Is there any, do we have any idea how much it's actually going to cost and where that money is coming from? Chairman?
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you. I'm listening to you. Yes, we've got estimated cost of, of construction of about $32 to $37 million.
$32 to $37 million?
Yeah, that's to construct the building itself and, you know, parking lots and, and everything. There's a lot of cost also that would go in, of course, security portion of that. The only way that I've seen to be able to accomplish that would be with a sales tax referendum that Mr. Cooley was speaking about earlier.
Do we need to have a $32 million judicial center?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, we've, we've been over this for 10, 10 years now, the cost involved, and, you know, this is something you're not, you're not building a, a structure to just get by with for 10 or 15 years. We're talking about a structure that will last the citizens of this county anywhere from 50 to perhaps 80 or 100 more years. And with a, with a sales tax, we could avoid a lot of interest costs, because the citizens of this county have the ability with a one-cent sales tax to pay that debt back in three years or even seven years with a half-cent sales tax. So, that's, that's where we would have to go from here is for a referendum to allow the citizens to know what they're buying, when they would see a sunset date on that, and which, whatever way they choose to go. But I, I see, you know, people say, "Well, how about a bond issue?" Well, bond issue still has to be paid back. It has to have a means of paying it back. So, that's, that's why I would support a sales referendum, because not only the citizens of the county, not only the landowners and people that pay Avalon tax, but everybody that visits our county, everybody that's driving through our county, everybody that purchases something in our county would help satisfy that debt service.
But we need something that's practical. We don't need to spend $32 million on a lot of granite and gaudiness. I would rather have a practical building. Yes, it needs to be big enough to cover the needs for the next maybe 100 years, but not necessarily once. What a beautiful building. We can have practicality and not pay quite so much money for it. The problem with free property, it's like a free horse. There is no such thing as free property. If somebody gives you property that's going to be taken off the tax rolls, then you're going to lose the taxes on that property. If you go and use a piece of property that you've already owned, that you're not receiving any taxes for, then you're not losing any money on taxes. You've already lost that whenever you bought the property. And I agree, there's a lot of property that was bought a number of years ago that we've not been getting taxes on for all that time, that we could have been had the, had the county not bought that property. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Wallace Mahoot, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I agree, we need a new courthouse, but that's not the issue. When I talk to people, when I talk to citizens, they don't want their tax money spent for more land. So having said that, let's take a little trip in the Wayback Machine. Let's go way back to July 11th, 2013, the Judicial Workshop Meeting. Mr. Lynchard, Mr. Salter, Mr. Melvin, all recommended a travel time study be performed. Has that been done? Mr. Salter moved approval without objection to direct staff to reengage HOK to upgrade Judicial Center study, including demographic study for future location. Was a demographic study?
All of those studies were done.
Okay. At both the September 23rd and 26th meetings, you assured the public that public meetings would be held. You suggested that two meetings should be held, one at the new Tiger Point Community Center, and one here at the Administrative Center. When were those meetings held? They were not held. Now, let's fast forward in our little time machine to December 12th, 2013. It was decided that JDL, BTF, and NEAL would be studied. Mr. Salter asked that one site on Highway 90 also be studied because all four sites on Avalon would probably show the same result. Let's just add the Coldwell property for evaluation purposes only, as traffic would be analyzed in the process, and if Coldwell is kicked out because of concurrency, then it's knocked out. So, how do we now have the Coldwell property as the property on which a contract with an option to buy is now in progress? Where are the studies that Mr. Salter stated would be in by midsummer? It's only February. Those studies were supposed to be in in midsummer, that's what you said, Mr. Salter.
Mr. Chairman, what studies are you talking about, Wallace?
That, whatever you said in that meeting.
Well, you just, you just asked, had some of those studies been done, and we said yes. Now, as far as the concurrency study, there is a study that was done. We, we talked about it about two weeks ago, that showed the traffic volume on Highway 90, the traffic volume on Avalon. So that study's been done. I don't know what study you keep talking about.
Well, I don't, I don't know what study you talked about in that meeting, but you said staff would have those studies in by midsummer. I'm just telling you what you said, and this doesn't make sense to me.
This has been, they've been done.
May I, this, this may clear it up. The studies that were done resulted in the recommendation from the consultant to this board that we concentrate our attention on the intersection of Avalon and 90 within a two or two and a half mile radius. And that was based upon his demographic study, and, and he located the geographic center population-wise, the, the center of the population of the county, and that, all those things went into his recommendation. That's where the two and a half mile circle around the intersection of Avalon and 90 came from, those studies.
When were those studies completed? What was the date?
I don't remember right off, but we can certainly get that for you.
Was it before the December 12th meeting?
I'm sorry, you caught me, I was speaking, you spoke, I didn't hear what you said.
I'm sorry. Were those studies completed before December 12th? I think they were. And then at the December...
And, and the point that you're missing, and I'm not trying to, to, to vate with you, but the point that you're missing here is that, that we did those studies, and those studies are what drove the designation of the two and a half mile circle around the intersection of Avalon and, and 90. So those have been done, and, and we'll, we'll provide you with, I guess we can get a copy of those. I don't remember exactly when they came in the building, but we can get you that answer too.
So those are the, studies are done and in, that's it, right? So now, and we've picked a site that has a C rating rather than Avalon, which is probably going to turn up to have an A rating. This is my point. Does anybody know what the concurrency rating currently is on Hamilton Bridge Road? No?
I'm sure we can probably get it. I don't, I don't know if, is Hamilton Bridge a state or a county road? I don't know if, if we have a concurrency rating on that or not.
Is Hamilton Bridge a two-lane road? Yes, it is. And also, those, those studies, which were also referred to as the first step studies, were done by Hatchmont MacDonald using relatively available information from the internet and site owners. So apparently, the first step studies have now become the final step studies. If you are going to expedite this contract, I suggest you not only make it contingent on the tax, but also on concurrency. Highway 90 has a C rating. The three properties on Avalon, which were finally picked before Mr. Salter suggested we just look at Highway 90, just for general purposes.
Wallace, let me say this. When I said Highway 90, I didn't say evaluation only. I said, "Let's, let's throw it in the mix so it can be evaluated along with the ones on Avalon."
Right, right. So, so...
We'll go through that process.
Highway 90 with a C rating is now the number one pick.
Mr. Chairman.
In my opinion...
One moment, please. Commissioner, Cole.
Thank you. Wallace, I don't ever recall either Commissioner Salter or myself not voting as the Highway 90 being one of the two choices. We differed in which, excuse me, we differed in which choice we had on Avalon, but I, I've always voted as 90 being one of the partials, as did Commissioner Salter. And when you say a C rating, I had Sean in here from our Planning and Zoning Department last time we discussed this, I didn't have him here today to confirm it. There's 8,800 more movements in that section of Highway 90 before it would lose, drop down another rating. Eight thousand eight hundred's a lot of movements, car movements.
That's, that, that, in full disclosure, that is a 2012 concurrency study, and it, it has not been adjusted for, for current usage, so we really don't have a handle on it. For the record, I voted in favor of the Avalon site. However, the majority of the board voted for the 90 site.
Except you.
And, and it's, you know, it's, it's my job to cooperate with the will of the board and the will of the county, and if, so, I mean, you're, you're taking us through what we've already done and explaining it to us, and we're just sitting here saying, "Yeah, that's what we did. We, we hired a consultant..."
That's right.
"...he located, he located the geographic center in Santa Rosa County. He made us a recommendation to begin our search within two and a half miles. We did that. The free property keeps coming up, and I agree, free is great, it's hard to beat free, but the, the overlying problems of, of the traffic for 90, just wait. They're replacing the Marcus Basin Bridge right now with a steel grating bridge. I've already asked my wife very respectfully not to use that until there's this concrete bridge, because she and I got sideways on one of those things just during the summer Highway 90 would be an absolute disaster if we put the courthouse out there. I have no, no preconceived prejudice against any of those properties out there, and I've stated here, I like the property on 90 that's under discussion. It's the traffic, and if you keep arguing to go to East Milton, that's just buying trouble, in my opinion. It's my opinion.
Okay. And my final statement. In my opinion, you have not done due diligence to the citizens of Santa Rosa County in selecting the Highway 90 property. Mr. Melvin made the statement, "Better right than quick." And to that line of thinking, I would like to add, "Better right than not at all," because if you buy more property, I don't think you're going to get the sale tax approved. And just one last question. The Coldwell property, who owns that property right behind that? Who owns Pond Creek? Anybody know?
Mr. Young's raising his hand, it's like, are you indicating that you know or that you own it? One of the partners in it.
Thank you.
Speak to Mr. Young, he can tell you who owns it. Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, Mr. Young doesn't own the property that we're looking at. That's Coldwell Banker.
Commissioner?
Yes, sir. Name and address for the record. I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Just to be real clear, title is held by Charter Bank. The real estate company is Coldwell Banker, and we, we've interchanged those in our conversation.
I understand.
But it is Charter Bank.
Yeah, we've been stumbling over that all morning, but I think everybody understands that. We're, we're dealing with the realtor on behalf of, of a bank that owns the property in question. Go ahead, name and record, please. Name and address, please.
Carl Hudgens, 3412 Barkwood Drive in Pace. That was one of my questions. We keep talking about the Coldwell Banker property, and my understanding is Coldwell Banker is a real estate agent. A lot of people think real estate agents own all this land, they have a sign in front of them, but most of them don't own a single parcel of that. So it's owned by Charter Bank, the piece on Highway 90 is owned by Charter Bank, and they're represented by Coldwell Banker. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, the piece behind that, that faces Hamilton Bridge Road, is owned by a separate corporation? Is that correct?
I have no idea. I haven't, I have no idea.
I think Mr. Young just raised his hand on one of these parcels, back parcel?
Pond Creek.
Pond Creek parcel on Hamilton Bridge Road. It's on Highway 90?
I believe the piece you're talking about borders the charter property. You, it shares the northern boundary of the charter property, it's the southern boundary of the, the property that you're talking about.
It has no road frontage.
I don't know whether it has road frontage or not. It doesn't have any frontage on 90, to my knowledge.
Okay, I looked at this property, this zone, four or five years ago, and come to the board and urged the board to try to build us a connector road from Highway 90 to Hamilton Bridge Road to take some of the traffic off of Hamilton, off of Highway 90. From my understanding, in the last meeting we spoke at, the pro, the school, the schools have bought a corridor through there, or a piece of property that would do that. And if that's true, it looks to me like the courthouse is, doesn't have any connection with the north-south corridor between Hamilton Bridge Road and, or this proposed site for this courthouse would not have a connection from Hamilton Bridge Road to Highway 90. Am I assuming and listening correctly? Okay, so, we have the corridor already. That's, that's owned by the school board. That's my understanding. We're looking at a piece of property on Highway 90 that's about 50 acres, and we're talking about buying 15 acres on the back of that piece of property, putting in almost $3 million worth of improvements, infrastructure to that piece of property, which will enhance that 50 acres, whoever, which is owned by a bank. It just looks to me like we're making bankers rich, and we're putting in roads for people who want to develop property that doesn't have road frontage. I spoke earlier and said that this deal's got to look right. If you want to present it to the people and ask them to come out of their pockets with additional taxes, to put us a courthouse on whichever property you want to put it on, it's got to look right when we go to sell it to the people for a, for an additional tax. And this is not beginning to look very right, from what I can tell. This is a good discussion. We have to work these things out. This is what this is about. The more dialogue and discussion we have on this, the more the people will understand what's going on. I'd think, and I know it's additional work, but I strongly suggest we need some evening meetings when the, and use the state DOT model for how to sell, or how to convince it's not selling. In a way, it is, you're selling people because they've got to come out of their pocket with taxes, and they got to vote to tax themselves. You've got to explain why it's the best. Now, the DOT will have meetings, and they'll have diagrams, and they'll have boards up here, they'll have distances to different places. We're kind of trying to envision this in our minds, and we're talking about Coldwell Banker property that Coldwell Banker doesn't own. There's a lot of things that are unexplained and hazy in everybody's mind, and I've been in the real estate business, and, and I've studied this area, and, and it's still not clear to me what y'all want to do, to be honest with you. So I think there are enough questions that we need to have more answers. In my opinion, of the four properties you were looking at, this one's beginning to look like the worst one to me. That's just my opinion. And I want a courthouse, and I want it in the right place in Santa Rosa County. And as hard as it is for me to vote for additional taxes, because I believe we already pay taxes to pay for our essential services, and courthouses are supposed to be essential services, I might come off of, of my pocketbook and vote for a tax if this thing can be, we can be convinced that it's done in a responsible way, we're not just trying to do another northwest Florida real estate deal that makes some people rich off a land that is questionable to start with. And I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying that those things, those answers have to be given on any piece of property. The other piece on Highway 90 is being given to you, or offered to be given to us, and that, and we understand that too, would take some infrastructure. What's the comparison? I don't think the infrastructure is probably going to be as much out there. I could be wrong, but it doesn't appear to me that it's favoring a piece of property that's questionable and full of wetlands and everything else, and has no road frontage. I don't want to step on toes, but it's all public record. Who owns these properties is public record, and we would like for staff or whoever to give us some diagrams, tell us who owns these properties, and give us some distances for convenience. This center, this Population Center study, that's, doesn't impress me a lot because there's a whole lot more aspects of where you put something than where the Population Center is. There's a good chance we don't want to put it in the center of the population. We just talked about how busy Highway 90 is, and I don't like to go down Highway 90 anymore. I'll go around to Berry Hill Road to stay off of it, even if I have to drive a little further. So adding something like that on Highway 90 is not, maybe, probably not the best thing. As far as the taxes goes, I keep hearing this deal that, well, if we convert properties to commercial, we'll get more taxes, property taxes. Those taxes are a small percentage. I think we're maybe making decisions on, on those kind of things that are really not going to affect, it's not like you convert timberland into commercial and all of a sudden that pays 10% or 20% of your annual budget. That one piece of property is going to be such a microscopic part of your annual budget, I really don't think that we need to make our decisions. I really don't think that we need to make our decisions based on which piece of property might be a timberland, and whether that one all of a sudden becomes commercial, and now they're paying $10,000 a year. In the overall view, when you're talking a $35 million investment, I don't think a $10,000 a year change, increase in a property tax is going to make a difference. Plus, wherever you go, there's going to be that added increase in property taxes. It could be more in one area, less in another, but it's all going to vote out, and we're talking microscopic percentages of our annual budget on that. So that is maybe a consideration, but I wouldn't put too much emphasis on that consideration. I just, I really think that we need to have more public input, we need to have more time for the people to understand what's going on. You need to present those four, or however many, options that you had in evening meetings, where people can come out in a town hall type thing, and you guys stand out here and talk to the folks about them, when they come down in the evenings, when they can get here. Fortunately, a few of us are retired, and we can come, or we have flexible schedules, and we can come talk to this. When I'm asking these questions, I consider myself asking questions for thousands of our citizens, because other people can't get here. Just some of my considerations, I really think we need to nail down, if you guys are set on Highway 90, give us some diagrams, what it's going to look like, give us some who owns it, what properties, where this road's going to come in, that y'all are going to add down by the courthouse. It looks to me like we're going to put 15 acres off to the side, it seems to me. This is what I'm visioning, and you're going to put a road off Highway 90 into the property in the back, and the courthouse just happens to be on that property. Now, if I'm envisioning that wrong, you let me know.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Speaker.
Today, we're looking at three different proposals, and the property in the back is just one of them. One proposal has a courthouse right up on Highway 90, and the other one just a little bit further back. So that's what we're debating today, is which location on Highway 90, within that piece of property, will we go with? So there's been no decisions made yet.
On the board, that's the, I believe that's option one, if you will, and then it's got to break it.
So you're going to have parking in the front, we're going to build a road in off Highway 90, and we're going to build a road out behind the courthouse.
And that's option three.
And each of those has a probable cost associated. Well, then again, that's just a broad design. We've not gotten the architects or the engineers. This is just to try to set everything to apples to apples, so the board can make some kind of general decision, as we've done through this last six or eight month process to get to this point, and that's, those are the three options that you've got on this particular piece of property.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm glad that maybe a dozen people got to see that. I'd like to see a lot more, and I know we can go on, probably on a website somewhere and see that, but I'm going to tell you that people live busy lives, and they have to prioritize what they're doing. And if you would put it out here where everybody could see it, and come down here and look at it on successive weekends, on several weeks at a time, or whatever, and let's talk about that. I'm assuming that there'll be right aways given to properties in the back. I don't know why we're talking about properties in the back so much. So through that discussion, I'm assuming that that's the intentions.
I don't know where that would have come from. We haven't talked about giving right aways to anyone. We're talking about the footprint of our courthouse, and that's it.
Well, I'm just telling you how the citizens look at things when you start talking about real estate deals. We want to know who owns the property around it, who might be getting access, and this is by, you know, from experience in northwest Florida, not just in this county, but in other counties we lived in, and we've seen deals, and we've bought properties in the back of other properties, and other people, developers have withheld the properties, the prime property on the front. The Five Points deal is still scalding me a little bit. We gave somebody extra road frontage and paid them double, more than double, for what they paid for that piece of property to start with, and gave them better commercial access, and access on two sides of it. And they hadn't owned it for about a year and a half, and it was a developer. Now, we can say that was accidental, or we can say that's just the way things worked out, and that might be, but the fact is, that's the way it happened, and it's public record, and you can go and look at that. So we need to, this thing's got to look right, we've got to be convinced. If we're going to give somebody, if we're helping a developer make their land worth twice as much, and yeah, maybe they will give us 15 acres. Maybe with our $3 million investment, they're gaining $30 million, maybe they'll pay us. Maybe they'll do the investment. Maybe they'll pay for the infrastructure. Don't sell out too cheap. Now, if you come across with a deal like that, the citizens might say, hey, these commissioners have got us a piece of property, and they've got a developer to pay for a right of way in, I can buy into that. So those are just the things. I think more public input, I'm encouraged that you guys are really, we're discussing this this much, and let's work together on getting something good, and so that you don't have people coming back down here in the years to come, saying that was another dirty deal, or whatever, in northwest Florida. I'm not saying it is, but that's something we have to be aware of. So I would appreciate it if you, we start talking about Coldwell Banker property, and we start calling it Charter Bank property like it really is. Those things, that just makes us upfront. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. Commissioner Lynchard, are you set up yet in the south end to accommodate a public hearing?
Yes, we are.
Okay. One of the holdups in the public hearings have not been held as promised. If you're where you can accommodate one, why don't we schedule one for the south end and one for the north end during the evening hours, and just deal with that, because it is something we said we were going to do. I realize we didn't have the capability, but we were anticipating you coming up on the line with it. So if you're on the line now, why don't we do that?
Yeah, the community center down there is up and running now. We actually have scheduled our first Board of Commissions meeting there for April the 10th, I believe. So we're...
Was it, was April because you weren't ready before that? Could we schedule something in a nearer timeframe? Are you ready now? If we could schedule something sooner than that?
I believe we are. I'll check with...
It's open. We've already had, I believe, the Restore Council meeting there, and I think we can accommodate whatever schedule is that the board wants to do.
And before anybody takes away the comment that I just made, just saying that we haven't had public meetings, each and every one of these are notice public meetings, and they're televised, and they're available, but I realize they're not available to the working public that might want to attend and make comments. So I would like the staff to find a date that's compatible with what's available with Commissioner Lynchard's vote, and schedule something. Commissioner Lynchard.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. And I would envision us having a series of meetings between now and when the measure is on the ballot. I mean, there's going to be an effort to get information out to people about the proposed construction. You know, the next step after we select a site is to start getting some good, a more workable set of plans, so we can get some good firm construction estimates, so that we know exactly what's going to be on the ballot in terms of length of the sales tax, what the overall cost is. So, you know, I think there's not going to be any shortage of meetings and workshops on that coming up.
Okay, but we need to begin to schedule them, because I know that the supervisor of election has a deadline. She has to prepare a ballot that has to be mailed overseas well in advance of the other ballots, and the primary, the last day to vote in the upcoming primary is August the 26th, and back up that for early voting. So we're going to need to expedite this in order to accommodate her deadline, Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Walker.
Again, I'm not exactly sure what the goal of the meeting would be for the Tiger Point Community Center, is that, is we've kind of gone through a process, and you mentioned it, Mr. Chairman. We started with determining what, A, we were going to pursue a judicial facility, what's the appropriate location for it, what's the appropriate area, then we solicited, we made that determination, what's, you know, we solicited proposals for sites, then we've gone through the process, then we're down to this site. So I guess, are we, I'm just trying to see what the goal is. I think at some point, you will want to make, go on the road, you'll have to do it a lot, because Mr. Cooley's wrong, we're going to have to advocate for this, for this particular judicial facility.
You asked, my vision for this would be public input, and maximize our dissemination of what's going on. So that would be, that would be the objective of the meeting, would be to get the kind of input that we get from those that can break loose from their business day, and come and see us face to face. But the other folks would like that opportunity as well. Commissioner Lynchard.
Mr. Chairman, I don't understand where we're trying to go with this either, because we've already had several meetings here, and we've discussed it. We looked at all the different potential sites. The board voted, I guess it was last meeting, three to one, to go ahead and move forward with one of the positionings on Highway 90. I think what I'm hearing today is, now we want to go back and have public meetings to see if we want to change our mind and put it somewhere else. I agree with what the county administrator said. I think our goal should be to go ahead and finalize one of these sites on Highway 90, and then start putting together all the other details that's going to go along with the building, the location, the potential projected cost, and then let that be our town hall meetings as we go forward, and showing people what we've designed, how much it's going to cost, those type things, versus continuing to delay moving forward. I'm afraid we're going to run out of time.
Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Commissioner Salter. I think the decision needs to be made, select a piece of property, and then we move forward. And then, we realize, just as everyone else should, that whatever site we choose, whatever site we chose at the last meeting, the Highway 90, none of that is final unless the voters agree with the decision that we have made. So we've made a judgment call on where we think the most appropriate site for the courthouse will be. Now it's our job to put that to the test. And, you know, a lot of people will disagree, obviously, with the site selection. Likewise, I've spoken with a lot of people who agree with that location. So I think it's time to move forward and narrow down the site.
As I say, I can count to three. So we need to dispose of this item and move on then.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynchard.
In reviewing the three sites, or the three alternatives for land in the sites, I like the second option, as presented in the agenda.
Would you put the second option up?
The second option is, on the east side of the property, on the northeast quadrant.
Excuse me, just a minute.
We'll get it put up on the overhead.
This is what Commissioner Lynchard is just discussing now.
Yeah, this is, we're not paying for the road frontage on Highway 90. I would also like to see us get, and Ms. Jones and I discussed this, a first right of refusal on perhaps some additional property at the back, so that if we, 15, 20 years from now, if they have not developed that parcel, and we find that, for whatever reason we're running out of space, we would have a first right of refusal on it. That ideally wouldn't cost the county anything to get that agreement in place. It's a fairly standard agreement when it comes to purchasing property like this. This also, again, is one of the lower cost options. It prevents us from having to buy the prime valuable frontage up on 90. I would also like to see us work with Charter on regional stormwater plans. We have a pond drawn in back there, but everybody should know that this is just for discussion purposes. You know, that pond is not really sized for our needs necessarily. So once we get into the weeds on engineering the site, we should ideally work with Charter to come up with a regional stormwater pond, probably save the county and them some money in the long run. That would be my first choice.
And what I would envision, Mr. Chairman, would be, is I've already talked to Duncan Brody with HOK, would be to, whichever site that you do select, is they'll be, they will be here at your next meeting, next committee meeting, to start firming up what it would look like, and then so they can start working on their 20%, I guess, plans for the construction of. The board still needs to make some decisions on a number of other things as we go through this process. So they will be here at your next meeting, and we'll know more. We'll know more each meeting as we put together the work. I think the retention pond issue's going to be good, and we had talked to the Charter Bank people about the right of first refusal anyway, so we'll...
And just one additional thing, if we decide to go with a property that is shaded off of 90 like this, we'd want to make sure that somehow we account for adequate signage up front, maybe a little cutout on 90 for signage for the facility.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Salter.
I had asked a question before the meeting this morning, is the area that's outlined, how many acres is that?
Eighteen point six.
How many?
Eighteen point six, three is what I understand. This was to put all four sites on an equal footing as they were evaluating.
Since I don't have a pointer, are we talking about, is this eighteen point six, or are we looking at this entire red area?
It would be the right of way coming in and the rectangle cutout.
And that's eighteen point six?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we were...
And that is flexible, if the board desired to have more or less, but...
And again, we were just using that, that was the amount of property on the Avalon site, trying to make sure that you're comparing apples to apples as you're looking at infrastructure and property calls.
I have a question I'd like to ask as well. Commissioner Lynchard brought up the Holden Pond and partnering with the other property owners on the Holden Pond. I'm assuming that this property contains enough room for a Holden Pond for everybody, or does, is there a possibility that we might have to acquire more property for Holden Pond than we've indicated here?
No, sir, not for the eighteen point six. Our consultant was evaluating what we needed, and he graphically represents his approximation without going through detailed engineering calculations, that this is approximate amount there in the rear.
So that would handle the county's needs as far as, is Holden Pond would go for our eighteen point six? Well, then that's a whole different issue. Commissioner Lynchard's comments that we may want to partner or whatever, if they want to partner, maybe they could come up with some land on their side, or split it across the side, or whatever, but that's for a future discussion. Okay, I'll take one more, please, ma'am.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East in Milton. Would there be any restrictions on what the land at the front there would be used for?
It would be zoned highway commercial, I'm assuming. I don't know what is... I don't know what is zoned right now, but I would anticipate that they would ask us for highway commercial and that'd be, that'd be justified.
So, there could be a used car lot there or any kind of commercial enterprise?
I don't know what all highway commercial contains, but whatever highway commercial.
We would not contain, we would not be able to control that unless we purchased the property. We wouldn't control what, what somebody would put there.
But if you're gonna have a judicial center, wouldn't there, wouldn't you want to have some kind of control over what goes on in front of it?
I don't understand how, I don't, you'd want, you, the option would be to purchase the eighteen acres at the front where you, where you don't have the out parcels. Would you show that, Roger? That's, that's the other option that we, that takes the, that takes the out parcels out, if you will. I don't know this, that you'd want to put your retention ponds at the front, but I'm just saying schematically and just for discussions, this, this is another option that the board has. It's more expensive because you're, you're purchasing the Highway 90 frontage as Commissioner Lynch had mentioned.
And what's the value of the property today? The whole parcel, what's the value of it?
I got no idea about the whole parcel. They've given us a list of prices on the, on the areas that we're looking at.
If, if, if I were making a decision about a piece of property and there's gonna be a piece that's right in front of mine, I would want to have something to say about what else goes in front. I would also want to know the value of the property as, again, free property is not free property because there are things that you have to pay for. Just a question.
Ms. Cantu, if we, this option with the county acquiring the Highway 90 frontage versus moving it north and butting up against the, the other property line, the difference in price is $510,000 for property acquisition cost. It costs half a million dollars more to locate the courthouse judicial center here versus 300 feet to the north.
But, but the price of the roads and all that, it would be less, right?
It would be. You'd have less of a throat on your driveway.
So, if you.
Which there's pluses and minuses about that.
So, if you compare the prices, how much difference would there be?
Four hundred and ten thousand dollars, roughly.
So, you'd only save a hundred thousand dollars?
No, you'd save four hundred and ten thousand dollars. The total estimated cost is 3.58 million for the property on 90, 3.17 million for the property off of 90.
So, if, if you bought from the front to somewhere in the back, what you would originally be given, it would cost you that much less?
We're not being given, and I don't, I don't understand, but we're not being given anything on this particular project.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I understood that it was gonna be, the, the property owner was gonna give you that property in exchange for.
No, ma'am.
Okay, I, I was, I was on the.
That was not included in their proposal. That's why we, that's why we have property cost in here and, and.
So, you're gonna pay for the property?
Yes.
Okay, and it's just a matter of whether you pay for the highway frontage or you pay to get in the back, and then you're gonna have to pay for the road to get to the back?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay.
And that's what's outlined in these probable costs.
Yeah, and the difference, you know, is half a million dollars in property cost, about $400,000 in development cost, both in favor of the property on the north side.
But if you had the frontage property, you wouldn't have any roads to go to the back other than parking lot roads, right?
So, you'd have your, your road off of 90.
I'm sorry.
You'd have your, the throat, the driveway off of 90, your road off of 90. You, you would have that in, in either case.
So, that's all you have, though? You don't have to pay any, any other paving to go to the back of the property?
Right, it's just whether you build a, a 200 feet, 200 foot long driveway or a 400 foot long driveway.
Does that make a lot of difference, right?
About a hundred thousand dollars.
And the price of the, uh, price of the property on the highway is, is considerably more expensive than the property at the back of the highway. So, it's, it's, it nets out to those numbers that Commissioner Lynch is giving you now. When, when you net that all out, it comes out to about 400 to 500,000 dollars less expensive to look at the back property, the northernmost depiction of the courthouse.
So, we just have to decide whether we want a courthouse that we can see from the highway or not?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And do you want it $500,000 worth? That's the question. Uh, we, all right, sure.
I'll argue about where we're, the other three spots in this one. Just to follow up, we're, it's gonna cost us $500,000 less to buy property in the back, but the property in the front, is this a consideration? Buy that whole side because I believe after you build the road and put the infrastructure in, each side will be worth two or three million dollars apiece or more. I mean, so, why don't you ask them that and then recoup some of this money for the citizens after you put the infrastructure in?
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Carl, that, that's my idea that I mentioned a while ago and the caveat that I was gonna put with Commissioner Lynch's piece of property. I agree 100%. The county don't need to be buying Highway 90 frontage for parking lots or holding ponds. That needs to go to the highest and best use. I would hope the developer would see that after we make our investment. And that would be where I would like to give staff the leverage to work with, work with the bank on making them recognize that this infrastructure has value, and if we're willing to do that infrastructure and put this facility on here, that you need to come off the price of your property, just like you or I would do if we were, you know, if, if, if we were looking at buying a piece of property or a car or anything else. We gotta give the staff some guidelines to work with so they can go make those negotiations and do that talking. Uh, well, you know, that's what I'd like to say.
Looking at the, the piece, the parcel up there, basically, we're looking at the east half of the property, but we want to, we want to give that, let them keep the highway frontage there. What if we buy that whole east half, go ahead and build our courthouse, then those two squares there, I believe you can sell for five or six million dollars total. And you've, you've got a free piece of property. You've paid for what you paid for it and you paid for the road into it.
Okay, we're gonna wrap, we're gonna wrap this up here and just say, Commissioner Cole.
Okay. Carl, I, you know, I can somewhat agree with that, but yet we've heard yourself and Mr. Cooley and everybody say, don't buy property, and now you're turning the boat around and saying, well, let's get in the investment business and buy property and resell it. We can't.
Well, wait a minute. We're talking about money here. We're not talking about a policy of, of, you know, oh, we're not gonna buy a property or we're gonna buy property. What we're talking about is citizens' taxpayers' dollars. And if you can pay for it by buying a little extra and then doing your development and then selling the two front parcels for what you paid for the whole thing, that's a no-brainer.
Yeah, okay.
That's the way, that's the way business people and private real estate investors and, and regular people like us that have to pay our bills and pay our taxes think.
That's, that's, that's a good comment, that's.
I would ask you to think about that.
No, that's, that's good comment and it's good stewardship, and we really appreciate you taking time out of your day to come down here. If, if, at the risk of verbalizing the obvious, this is a very complex issue, and it's, when it settles, there're gonna be people that still aren't happy with the decision. So, I think we've plowed through this pretty thoroughly. We'll continue this to Thursday without objection.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to comment is that I have the same concern about what would be built in front of the courthouse. I know we can't always get what we want. So, my, my first choice initially was gonna be option one, but I, I can read the tea leaves as well, whatever it would take to move this forward. And I'm gonna remind everybody of something that a former county commissioner said years ago. Anytime you take on a project of, of this magnitude, almost anything we do, 50% of your friends are for, 50% of your friends are against it. Support your friends.
One thing, and not to make it any more complicated than it's already been, is we really could, we could get a price, would you project that back? We could get a price on, would you go to the second? Yeah, I mean, this is kind of the Angie Jones plan would be to come down the, the west boundary of that and just, just square it off, and then we, we can, we can get you a price on that. Obviously, your development cost isn't gonna be anymore, it doesn't look like. You would take care of Ms. Cantu's concern, and Commissioner Salter had mentioned it to me earlier this morning, concerned about what the two out parcels were. It just puts us in the development business and, and again, that's just, that's a policy decision that Mr. Hudgens had mentioned, so it'll, it'll be more, but it, it certainly would be, we, we can get you that price to at least determine.
Commissioner Lynch.
Can we, can we move to Thursday then? Those two options, either this as presented or the entire east side of the parcel? Without objection.
Here it passes. We're gonna go ahead and take the 10:30 break at 10:21. Police be back in place here at about, what, 10:35? Is that enough time to stretch?
We will resume our meeting. We're on administrative committee. Item number two. Item two is discussion of proceeding with the Florida Department of Transportation, U.S. 98 Highway Beautification Project Phase Two. Mr. Walker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the information on that particular item. This was a matter where I believe we had bid the beautification project. I think the DOT budget was $60,000, and we'd received the bid in the amount of, I believe, it was $74,337. I believe at the last meeting, Mr. Richards with United Peninsula had noted that they were not able to receive the requisite maintenance funds, donations for maintenance, because they had not obtained their tax-free status through the, or tax-exempt status through the IRS. So two decisions the board needs to make is what to do about the pending bid, which would be a one-time item. And then the second thing is, at least in some kind of short term, what are they going to do about the maintenance costs?
Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I mentioned, or offered at the last meeting when we discussed this, to make up the shortfall in the bid out of District Five capital funds. That's $14,000 to get $60,000 from the state. So I see that as a good investment. You know, the UPA has put a lot of work into these projects. The first project that they completed has been installed for quite some time now. It looks great. It really does add a lot to the median and drive on Highway 98. This is phase two of that project. You know, my biggest concern is that if phase two doesn't get approved, then that's going to kind of squash any further movement on the projects as we move over into, further down the highway into the Navarre area. I know there have been some requests and questions and projects that are really sorely wanted over in that area as well. So I would ask that we make up the difference there in the bid out of District Five capital funds. On the maintenance for the project, again, as Mr. Walker said, UPA has not been able to get their 501(c)(3) designation from the IRS. Those sometimes take quite some time. The estimated maintenance is $8,000 to $12,000 per year. Then there's a power bill for about $50 to $75 per month. UPA has financial backing for the project. They just haven't been able to receive any checks yet because the corporations that want to write the checks can't get a deduction until their 501(c)(3) is in place. So I'd ask that the county take that on for, you know, the first year or until such time as UPA can take it over when they get their 501(c)(3) designation. And I think UPA would have to pay the power bill from the, out of the gate regardless because they're going to have to also sign the JPA with FDOT. So this is a partnership between county, FDOT, and UPA. And I think it's a great project for the South End.
Are you going to make that in form of a motion? That you make up the $14,000 shortfall and the county make up the maintenance until such time as their 501(c)(3) comes through?
And they're able to take it over.
And then they pick up the power now?
Yeah. I will make that in form of motion.
Don, anything you want to say on this?
Don Richards, 1129 Park Lane, Gulf Beach, Florida. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I just spoke with our agent with the IRS en route here today, and it is being heard this week. So we should have a ruling sometime this week or next week is what I expect to hear back and then the formal document very shortly. So hopefully, this is going to be a short-term arrangement, but I certainly appreciate your support.
Absolutely. We appreciate what you're doing for the South End of San Rosa County. We have a motion made without objection.
Without objection.
Here and none, it passes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you. It would take this forward to Thursday. We're not approving the, carried forward to Thursday. All right. Item number three is discussion of the confirmation or approvals Cassie, Caskey, as a county extension 4-H agent as selected by the University of Florida IFUS Extension. And I believe we have the young lady present. Yes, sir. Come on up and introduce her.
Just showing why they're coming forward as you see the letter to Ms. Casskey from the IFUS. This is, according to the memorandum of an understanding with the University of Florida is they select the agents, the cooperative extension agents, and then the Board of Commissioners just approves or ratifies those. And then when you see the partnership that we've gotten with them on their cost and our cost.
Good morning. Mike Donahoe, County Extension Director, San Rosa County Extension Office. As Mr. Walker said, the university has gone through the process. As you know, our 4-H agent, Vicky Mullins, retired last October after many years of dedicated service. And per the cooperative agreement, the university has gone through the process interviewing and a number of outstanding candidates. But the one that rose to the top was Ms. Prudential-Caskey. Ms. Caskey has grown up in 4-H all of her life. She was a 4-H agent, outstanding agent down the state as a youth. In San Rosa County, she became a 4-H program leader, club leader, for a number of years, an outstanding leader. And then two years ago, she became our 4-H program assistant. And has done an outstanding job. And since last October, she has more or less taken on two responsibilities of the 4-H agent and the program assistant. And she knows our 4-H program, our 4-H program in and out, and she's done an outstanding job. So we'd like to recommend for your confirmation, Ms. Caskey is our 4-H extension agent.
Absolutely. And I will move this forward to Thursday without objection. Here and none, it passes. Congratulations and thank you for your service. Item number four will be the discussion of the contract with West Florida Recycling Incorporated for transportation and processing of recyclable materials. Material is in the backup, but I know the public can't see all that we can see. So, Mr. -- we need to get, we need to get the, there we go. Mr. Walker?
You see the information on the situation. We had contracted with West Florida Recycling April 1 of 2012, five-year contract. And you see the current situation. And we had, at the, I believe it was a meeting a month ago, the board had directed staff to process a request for proposal format for the, these services. And we've done that. It's on the street. And so I believe we allowed a 30-day response. It'd be interesting to see who, if anyone's able to respond to that. So we will, we will see. But in current situation with West Florida, of course, there was so much residual material, if you will, left over from the holidays that you just see in January, we actually had ended up landfilling more than we recycled. February, at least to the 18th, they're, they're, we're only process, we're processing about, interpret the numbers there, Roger, on what the...
Essentially, the numbers show that Central received almost 400 tons of material during that 18-day period. The recycled materials taken to Pensacola during that same period of time was somewhat significantly less of 338. That was to be processed. But the residual, which is the wasted materials, exceeded what we collected by 107 more tons, 445 tons. So that says we take out 400, but we got 445 back as residuals. So that states that they're not recycling.
We're saying recycling, but they're not processing the material.
Processing the recycled.
And there's also an issue. Ms. Jones, would you brief us on the status? I know the last time the gentleman was here, he promised to see how a loan and that we would be paid within two days, et cetera.
Those amounts, this is currently what they would owe us at this particular point. And you're exactly right. So they aren't current. They've not gotten current. And that's part of the concern, and the chairman brought this out the last time the gentleman was here, is the only thing they talk about is getting loans for equipment and other things. They're not making changes or improving their processing or their capability. I mean, they're, they're just kind of treading water, and that's what this appears to be.
Open this up for the board. Commissioners? Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I guess my question to staff, and they've had a chance to work closely with this company in the past and reviewing their current situation, do we believe they can do it?
They certainly, I just don't have any indication they can. I mean, you, y'all have heard the same thing that we heard, maybe that we've heard continuously. I mean, it's just, the bottom line is, is they're just not processing material, and they're not getting caught up. I mean, so the, I just don't see that they've got any plan forward in dealing with this. And this points out where our sites are. Roger, if you could go to the next one. This, this kind of would be, again, I mean, we, we still continue, you see the dates on here, going through, Roger, and then, but you see some of the more recent times. And we continue to struggle. And Ms. Adams is here about the five-point sites, and we, we just struggle with that. And, and so what, if the contract is discontinued, this is what we would propose to do, would be to really go back to the program that we had, is we would go back to a market-based recycling program where we would accept specific materials with an available market. We'll have to come back to you as we, to upgrade the existing recycling equipment, if that's the direction that the board continues to go. We will need to add an inmate crew. And then, and then we'll talk in a minute about our individual recycling sites. But this is just the only way we know to go forward, would be at least on a temporary basis, reassemble our equipment, get an inmate crew in here, and then start processing that. And I think it will be, I think we will have the least disruption in the program, but we're going to have to kind of change the recycling sites that we'll get to in just a second, so.
Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Walker, on here, it says accept specific materials with an available market. How would that affect our curbside recycling in the South End?
It would only affect those materials that we direct our curbside recyclers to collect. We would anticipate going on a blitzkrieg of information to our residents. We'd include it in their monthly bill that we would accept only those marketable materials. Currently, those are cardboard, clean papers, certain plastics, basically water bottle-type plastic, and of course, all metals. Metals have always had a market for metal. So that's what we would, through an education program, encourage. It would not affect our curbside at all, other than the materials collected.
Right. Reeducating people on what they can put in the, in the can. I guess a better question would be, what can we not put in the can that we were putting in there before? Would that be glass?
Glass, dirty, any dirty boxes, pizza boxes. You know, that was a big thing. We moved from no pizza boxes to pizza, those are not marketable. You know, they're contaminated papers, and the thing you want is clean recyclables for market.
So it wouldn't, it sounds like it wouldn't change what we put in the box very much. Glass, big thing, and then dirty cardboard. Okay. Thank you.
And other type plastics, too, just to be certain. Those are select plastics versus every plastic.
Anybody else? Chris Cole.
Thank you. Through the chair, Roger. Why not glass? I thought we had the crusher out there to take care of the glass.
Yes, but it's labor-intensive and it's a dead cost. There's no market to sell, other than just the handling that they do. But we make no money on glass. And we still have the glass crusher. And if, if it was the desire of the board to do something, we could easily put out just a single glass container at Central and generate all that we would need to keep that flowing. But as far as a market-based recycling program, glass is a loser.
And if it ever becomes, or at least closer, and then that's kind of how we've operated the program in the past, is, and the big difference when, when they went, I guess, with the single stream, if you will, and I know that we start mixing concepts, but the dirty, the dirty recyclables seem to have really hurt their marketability. And when the, when the, when the market dropped, as it was mentioned several meetings ago, it's just, it's just has no value.
Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, what I was going to recommend is we move to Thursday's agenda, the discontinuation of the contract with West Florida Recycling, without objection.
Well, I agree with that, but I have another issue. And I know that things have to flow, but I think maybe we might have to have some parallel operations here. What are we going to do about the recycling sites in the interim? Because they're already backed up, and this is going to further add to that. I mean, what's, what's the best way to handle that? Do we just close them? What do we do between, during this changeover point? How do we handle that? What do we do?
Well, given that the contractor's no longer occupying our structure and all, we would advocate a closure. If the building's empty, we're thinking about a two-week in which we close all the sites and recover all those full containers. Okay? We have to do that. And then redistribute and reallocate those containers to select sites, not all 19 sites. Of course, we're going to talk about two more in just a moment with Mr. Walker. And be very select and also hit our ad campaign, if you will, our information to the schools, to the general public, all of our South End haulers. And then eventually, as the North End, if you move forward with franchising... End, if you move forward with franchising, there may be opportunities to close even more, which will reduce the opportunity for illegal dumping and abuse.
So what we would do would be to immediately padlock all the sites, and then begin to move that material away, and then spin back up new sites?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a, a motion to move this to Thursday without objection. Yes, ma'am, come.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East in Milton. I use the recycle sites a lot, and I noticed that there was a change when you all allowed people to put everything in one door, rather than dividing it. There seemed to be a problem there, and I don't know whether that has anything to do with the problem that you're having. Is it a problem with the people that have the contract not having the ability to do what they're supposed to do?
Yes, ma'am. In, in a short, one-word answer, yes, ma'am. They're over their head.
And do you, and do you have someone who can, can look at their site to find out where they're lacking, or?
They don't have the financial stability, they don't have the equipment, they've, they've got problems in lots of areas, and they are, they are in default with our contract. They've contracted with us to provide a fixed service, they have failed to do that. They're in arrears with their payments to us, they owe us a lot of money, so what we're preparing to do come Thursday is to terminate that contract, and the other things that you're hearing discuss is, what do we do with all those sites while we're doing this? And the answer is, we're going to lock them down, clean them out, and then we'll set them up anew when we, when we get our arms back around this problem.
My, my problem with that is, how much is it going to cost you to clean up the sites that you closed, because people are going to continue, I would imagine, to dump stuff there? Is it going to cost you more than leaving those, those cans there to collect what people?
And the cans will move when we can get to them, but in the meantime, we're going to lock it down, and if people dump around it, we're just going to have to have the sheriff's department helping us with that.
I would just offer that, you know, rather than taking them away, you clean it up and, and maybe provide somebody who can actually collect that, at least to take it to the dump, if not recycle it, just an offer, suggestion.
Thank you for your suggestion, appreciate it.
Ms. Cantu, and let me just, to, to, to address the board, is, is, we've talked about what to do with the recycling sites, kind of ad nauseam, is, is, because that's really the key, and I don't know that, I don't know that we can do it in two weeks, I don't know, I don't know if we would try to, try to Band-Aid over it for the two-week or four-week period, I mean, we've talked about that, so I mean, I think we'd need to look at that a little closer, but, but the cleanest way to do it would be the way that Mr. Blaylock outlined, the chairman outlined, that we would close the sites, start the reeducation pro, pro, program, and then, and then start the sites back when we're, we're able to process them, because we're still going to be getting in, during that interim, you're still going to be getting in your, your South End curbside recyclable materials, so we've got to somehow figure out how to deal with that.
So does, does Santa Rosa County, does Santa Rosa County have the facility to recycle the material?
We did, it's a processing center, is, is, yes, ma'am, we ran for about 20-some-odd years, we, we ran a, a processing center ourselves, and, and then we solicited the proposals in, in 2012 that resulted in this contract, and, and the, the selling point then was that they could do it cheaper, and, and, and they could also, it saved us essentially the transportation cost for the sites, but quite frankly, they've not been able to, the firm has not been able, as Mr. Commissioner Melvin mentioned, to, to keep their end of the contract.
So the problem is the company getting the stuff to the recycle site that you have?
It is, and I think, well, certainly they're struggling with it, and also that, that they don't have a big enough site, Mr. Melvin mentioned that they don't have the financial backing, they just don't seem to have a very good business plan.
They just don't have the wherewithal to live up to the contract, period, so we're going to shut it down and, and deal with it, as you've heard us discuss. I have a, a motion made with no objection.
Thank you.
And, yes, ma'am, thank you for your comments, and here in none it passes. Item number five is discussion of closure of recycle, recyclable collection sites at Five Point Intersections, Tiger Point Recreation Facility.
Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to support this, I appreciate Ms. Adams' continued information coming our way. It's a shame that we're to this point where we're having to close some of our facilities because people misuse them. As we've talked about in the past, they turn them into garbage dumps. I passed by this site probably two or three times a day, and it's just, it's nothing but garbage, and dead animal carcasses. It's a shame that you can't regulate common sense and good behavior, but we need to do what we have to do to protect those who are trying to be good citizens and abide by our rules. So I definitely would like to see the Five Point one closed, and also, Ms. Adams had sent me some information, when we close it, we need to go ahead and put up some type of barricade or fence, because, just because we close it, that won't stop improper dumping there, so.
Absolutely. Commissioner Lynchard, do you have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had the same problem down there at Tiger Point, I think to a, to a lesser degree because of our ability to recycle curbside in the South End of the county, but I would support closing that, that facility, and again, putting up some signage, and I don't know if a physical barrier would work on our site down there.
We'd get into the weeds, but we would advocate removal of all the, the aggregate, the culvert, and those sorts of things, and it would put it back into its original state.
Thank you.
Okay, then I will move item number five to Thursday without objection. Here in none it passes. Item number six is discussion of an increase in annual fee paid to the Town of Jake for the use of the community center by several county functions and departments. Backup is in, is available, lesser questions, I'll move this to Thursday. Excuse me. Quite a bit. Oh, Ms. Adams, I'm sorry, please come forward. You need to turn the light on for us.
Shelley Adams, 5716 Quintet Road, behind Five, Five Points garbage dump. I, you know, I appreciate this, this discussion, it's encouraged me that you're going to do something about the Five Points recycling area, because it really, the last seven weeks, you know, seven weeks ago, I stood here and I asked you to close that. For seven weeks, I have been over there, I have taken video, I have taken pictures, and I think I've shared those, and I think there's proof that that place is a garbage dump. It's too convenient, I have talked to people, it's too convenient to come by and, and drop off their garbage, drop off their recycles, fortune, well, unfortunately, there are a few people who have ruined it for others. But you're talking about the West Florida Recycling Company, part of their problem, I don't mean to defend them, but if these areas had been managed better, they would not have had the, the, the amount of non-recycled material that they've had to deal with. I'm surprised they haven't charged you for garbage pickup. But anyway, like I say, most people do drop off recycled materials, but unfortunately, some people have dropped off everything but the kitchen sink, and I assure you, I have seen just about everything but the kitchen sink at the Five Points drop-off place. Santa Rosa County needs to invest in these recycle areas and educate people that you're talking about, about what needs to be recycled and what cannot be recycled, but they also need to do something to manage these areas, because people don't read signs, they don't do what they're told to do. I know, I mentioned that I saw the two bins on Woodbine one morning this week, and stuff was piled all over those, but people just don't do what they're supposed to do. But anyway, my point being here today, are there two things about the West, the Five Points area? If you move those bins, you need to clean up that area. All behind those bins looks like a landfill. For about the past year, this stuff has collected, and the ground looks awful, that's one thing. And the second thing is prevent access to that area. We still have people who come from Quintet Road, through the private driveway, go around the red signs, and access, access that area. We have people who come up to the red signs from Quintet Road, go to the recycle bins, and then leave through Quintet Road. That's a private drive. It's true, the bank owns most of that property there now, because it was foreclosed from Harold Downey. Downey still owns just a very small piece of land on that culvert coming from Quintet Road, but it's still private property, and you're allowing that usage coming through there. So anyway, my point is, even if you put up barricades on Shamuckla Highway, people are going to go through those barricades, they're going to stop, they're going to walk, and they're going to dump on that property, even when you remove those recycle bins. There is a load of limbs off of a dead palm tree that someone dropped off a couple of days ago. There's a, a load of yard trash there, someone drops off leaves, but you need to remove that driveway that you put into that recycle area. Just putting up barricades is not going to stop the dumping. It might stop the cardboard boxes and all this that you're, you're saying the bins are no longer there for, but it's not going to stop people from coming and dumping yard trash.
You, you may have missed Mr. Blaylock's comments, but that was one of his remedies that he's going to do for us, he's going to take that stuff up.
Well, I appreciate that, I heard you say that culvert, and I hope that's.
So that's going to be done.
I don't know, I don't know that he can take up Mr. Downey's.
No, but if you take up the counties, the one that you put at the recycle bin, that will prevent the access, you know, going through there.
We can do that.
So that would.
We can do ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll move ours.
Okay, good. Anyway, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments.
And thank you very much for putting up with me for the last seven weeks, and I appreciate what you have done.
We appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts with us, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to item number six, which is the discussion of the increase in the annual fee paid to the Town of Jake for the use of the Jake Community Center by several county functions and departments. We've got that back up there, any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What are we currently paying for that? It says.
Thirty, $30,000. I believe this goes back to probably 2,000 or 2,001, and we've played, we've paid $30,000 a year, and it's never changed. The items, and we've got the co-op extension is in there, our, our library's in there, and the, the tax collector used to be in there, I'm not sure about that function now, but there were, there were three or four functions in there at one time, but I know the two big ones are the, the library and the cooperative extension.
Thank you.
What's price per, I'm sorry, what's price per square foot going to be for the areas that we rent? I know we, we owe them an increase and all that, but I just, if you bring that back to us Thursday, that'd be helpful. Commissioner Salter, I didn't mean to cut you off, I apologize.
In the, in their proposal, they're stating $15 per square feet, and we're occupying about 3,000 square feet, so that'd be the 45,000. Mr. Walker and I met with the town clerk, Linda Carden, a couple of weeks ago. I support shoring this up, making them whole at the $45,000 level, but I would not support an automatic 3% increase per year, because it's going to be based on our budgets and inflation and those type things, so, and they're asking for a three-year contract, so even though I support increasing the amount of 45,000, I'd still like to include in the recommendation on Thursday for the county administrator, the county attorney, to sit down with them and create some type of contract.
Mr. Chairman. Make that, our, our commissioner call.
And, and that's, that's where I was going with that, too, the 45, I agree with, but I, I don't want to see a built-in 3%.
Okay, so did you make that in the form of a motion without objection, Mr. Salter?
Motion without objection.
Here in none it passes. Item number seven is discussion of a proposal from Southwest Trailer Manufacturing Incorporated doing business as trailer factory in the amount of $24,531.95 for a portable concession trailer for Fidelis Park based on comparison shopping. Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, including that, the funds will come from District III Recreational Funds. This is something we've been working on for quite some time, hopefully, we'll be able to get something for them before the season's over, and I would move, I would move approval, move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
And here in none it passes. Item number eight is discussion of, of a waiver of a nuisance ord, nuisance ordinance, noise ordinance requirement for entertainment associated with the annual Boo Weekly Charity Golf Tournament at Hidden Creek Golf Course, 8:00 PM through 1:00 AM Friday, July 25th and Saturday, July 26th, 2014. So we have this event once a year, it's a, it's a great fundraiser. I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Here in none it passes. Item number nine is discussion of purchasing Cisco Blade server system with required operating software from Presudio Networked Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $40,574.80 based on comparison shopping. Backup is in the book, I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Here in none it passes. Item number 10 is discussion of soliciting bids for replacement equipment and vehicles in several departments to be funded from the Capital Reserve Fund. Details are in the back of the book. I do have one question, I didn't have an opportunity to ask the staff earlier this morning, the 15-packs van, somebody needs to help me with what we're going to do with the 15-passenger van.
The one I believe that we use with the park service at Navis, I believe this takes the inmate crews for the, we get a 10-person inmate crew, and then we, we transport them, we've probably got two or three of these, we've got one for the road department on their brush crew, there's this crew that does the parking.
We've got a couple in the road department, one in the parks department, but that's what they're for, is to transport the inmate crews and the tools they use to the job sites, and these are replacement vans.
Thank you very much for that clarification. I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Here in none it passes. Item number 11 is discussion of initiating Land Development Code, LDC, related to home occupations, again, the, the backup material's in your book. Lesser questions or comments from the board, I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Here in none it passes. Item number 12 is discussion of the use of the courthouse law on noon, Thursday, May 1st, 2014, for the annual National Day of Prayer observance to include use of the courtroom 100 as a rain alternative. I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Here in none it passes. Item number 13 is public hearing scheduled for 9:30 AM Thursday, February 27th, 2014, be none. That concludes the administrative committee and brings us to the engineering report. Mr. Blaylock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member of the board. Our first item is a discussion of the dual northbound left-turn lanes from Navarre Beach Causeway onto US 98. This is a placeholder, bids will be coming in tomorrow, we'll be opening bids on that. One, do want to bring to the board's attention that we did bid, bid the job based on our construction plans, we do not have the current DOT permit, we had to submit simultaneously for scheduling, and we'd anticipate there may be some minor changes, and we'd bring that back to the board as a negotiated change order.
We'll move this to Thursday without objection, with the understanding that may raise enough questions that we have to carry it forward to another meeting.
Yes, sir.
And do so without objection. Here in none it passes.
Item number two is a discussion of change order number two to the contract with A.E. Newd Jr. This results in a $2,053.17 reduction in the overall contract, and they're asking for additional 19 days, and this is relative to the Baghdad Volunteer Fire Department, and this, this is being constructed with their MSBU assessment.
I recommend we move this Thursday without objection. Here in none it passes.
Item number three is a discussion of the asbestos removal relative to the Ramblewood Stormwater Drainage Improvement Project. Attachment B in your backup is the actual report, this was part of the contractor's requirement that he conduct the study, and indeed, they found asbestos. We anticipate by Thursday having a, a firm price, but it's on the order magnitude of $20,000, $25,000 for asbestos removal in disposal prior to demolition.
I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Here in none it passes.
And then items number four and five are those two subdivisions that could come before the board, provided they get their information in.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to speak up.
I said items four and five are those two subdivisions that could come before the board if they get all their information in.
Are they working punch lists or? Are they working punch lists or anything like that?
Um, I can project those, uh, number.
Well, if, if they're not ready for, for prime time, bring them back to us on a Monday when they are, and then we will proceed from there.
Okay.
I, I really don't want to move things, you know, with punch lists, and, uh, we don't know where this is.
Well, right now, both of these meet our requirement as a placeholder to come to the meeting, and I can answer that, uh, very shortly, it will, if either one of those have a punch list, they'll might be on the agenda, and I will, I will work that.
This, this meeting is designed for us to look at things, to discuss things, for the, for the public to question things, and if you've got a, a subdivision like this with, 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 you know, loose ends, don't bring them to Monday, because Monday is supposed to be able to discuss everything, so the public knows what we're doing.
We, we, we will do that.
Thank you. Uh, next is Public Service Committee, Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, let me go back, I, I.
Yes, sir.
To items four and five, did we move those to Thursday?
No, sir, we don't know, we, we don't, we don't have anything to discuss, to share with the public, the public had no notice, if there is or isn't.
We have, we have in the backup the layouts of the, um, one's the preliminary plat, and, uh, and so they're asking for preliminary plat approval, which allows them to move forward, um, with construction plans and final plat. And then the second one is, uh, a development order request for Boraco Cave, and what we have done historically was put them on a placeholder, discuss them Monday, but if, if for some reason they don't meet all of the requirements, they would be struck and not included on Thursday.
Okay, so you, but, so, so what you're saying is if we carry this to Thursday, and, and there's a, a, a punch list or something, they don't be.
They won't be, they won't appear, but remember, you had asked, the board had asked that nothing be brought Thursday that hadn't been presented on Monday, and that's what we're trying to do here.
Yes, but, okay, so, no, that's fine, Commissioner Lynchard, continue your thought.
If they, if they get their, their, um, all of the requirements nailed down before Thursday, though.
Before Tuesday, that's when our agenda goes in.
Before Tuesday.
Okay.
Then they could be back here on Thursday for approval, I just wanted to clarify that, because otherwise, you know, they're gonna be, if we start doing this, it'll be two weeks at a minimum, likely three, or a lot of times three, when we have a, a five Thursday month, so.
That's, that's true, and what I want to avoid is a situation we ran into a year and a half ago, or wherever, where we had all sorts of problems, uh, that the public had major concerns with, with fire trucks, ambulances, et cetera, and, uh.
Yeah, I understand that.
The perception was that we were trying to hurry the thing through, so that, out of an abundance of caution, I, I ask that we not do this, but you make a good point, I'm, I'm not hung up on it, I mean, I'm flexible, if, if this is just routine stuff, then you can pull it Tuesday and tell us Thursday there's nothing to do.
That's correct, because we, we will, we will always present anything that could appear on Thursday.
Okay.
Unless the board adds something to agenda, of course.
Yeah, so if, I would just like to leave it on there, I mean, I don't, I'm not familiar with, with either of these projects, but, uh, other than what's in the, the material, but.
Yeah.
You know, if, if they're hung up for a technicality right now, and they are able to, to get that removed by tomorrow, when the agenda's finalized for Thursday, um, then I'd like to see them have that chance on Thursday.
Yeah, that's fine with me, uh, just as long as we're talking about minor i's to dot and t's to cross, and not major issues like we ran into a year, year and a half ago.
Understand.
Right, well, we will move items four and five forward to Thursday with the understanding that, uh, you may pull them before.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do so without objection, here in none, those pass. I'm sorry, Mr. Lynchard, continue, please, sir.
We have three items in Public Services, the first is discussion of approval of the HHRP second mortgage subordination request for the property located at forty-three, thirty-one Crosswinds Drive in Milton, there's backup in your material, I will move that to Thursday without objection.
Here in none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of approval of the ship second mortgage subordination request for the property located at seventeen-sixty Narrow Road in Jay, I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here in none, it passes.
And item three is discussion of approval of the ship short sale request for the property located at sixty-five oh-seven Flagler Drive in Gulf Breeze, I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here in none, it passes.
And that concludes Public Services, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir, Commissioner Lynchard, Public Works, Commissioner Cole?
Thank you. Item number one is discussion removal and disposal of abandoned boat at the Morrell Road Boat Ramp, and license agreement with property owner adjacent to boat ramp for area to dismantle and load the boat. Backup's in your books, any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here in none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of purchase of steel piling and beams for bridge construction from Sable Steel Services at a cost of sixty-two thousand, five hundred, fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents based on comparison shopping, uh, move that without objection.
Here in none, it passes.
That concludes this report.
Okay, sir, uh, last item before the public forum, the Budget and Finance Committee, Commissioner Cole?
Thank you. Item number one under budget is discussion of budget amendment 2014 dash oh-eighty-three in the amount of two thousand dollars to carry forward funds for the Jay Library from a donation from the Curtis Finley Foundation Incorporated in the General Fund, do so without objection.
Here in none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of budget amendment 2014 dash oh-eighty-four in the amount of two thousand dollars to carry forward funds for crime prevention materials to be distributed by the Crime Prevention Specialist in the Sheriff's Office in the Fine and Fortune Forfeiture Fund, do so without objection.
Here in none, it passes.
Excuse me. Item three is discussion of budget amendment 2014 dash oh-eighty-five in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to fund the participation in the Team Florida Partnership Program Commitment Agreement as approved by the Board of Accounting Commissioners on February thirteenth, 2014, from the electric franchise fees, I do so without objection.
Here in none, it passes.
Item four is discussion of budget amendment 2014 dash oh-eighty-six in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars to carry forward funds for the purchase of materials for the extension of the water line to upgrade fire protection in Peter Prince Airport as approved by the, uh, at the February thirteenth, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting from the Peter Prince Enterprise Fund, do so without objection.
Here in none, it passes.
Item five is discussion of budget amendment 2014 dash oh-eighty-seven in the amount of eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars to transfer funds from the Capital Fund to the Self-Insurance Fund and the General Fund for copiers and network equipment, I do so without objection.
Here in none, it passes.
Item six, discussion of budget amendment 2014 dash oh-eighty-eight in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars to fund the purchase of computers and thin clients for the Grants Department, uh, the Personnel Department and libraries from revert, reserves contingency in the General Fund, do so without objection.
Here in none, it passes.
Item seven is discussion of budget amendment 2014 dash oh-eight-nine in the amount of eight hundred dollars to transfer funds from the Reserve for contingencies for the purchase of a computer for the Self-Insurance Department in the Self-Insurance Fund, do so without objection.
Here in none, it passes.
Item eight is discussion of budget amendment 2014 dash oh-ninety in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to recognize the 2013, 2014 Defense Infrastructure Grant Award to purchase land or secure easements around Lightning Field as identified in the joint land use study agreement as approved at the February thirteenth, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting in the Grant Fund, do so without objection.
Here in none, it passes.
And finally, discussion of county expenditures and check register, which I've signed and returned to the secretaries for your final approval, I move that without objection.
Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but just to clarify, the motions on one through eight were to move all of those items to Thursday without objection?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
Before we move away from the Budget Committee, uh, for Thursday's meeting, is there a problem with me adding Fidelis concession trailer under the Budget Committee on Thursday, so we can go ahead and get that ordered?
Not from me.
We can do that, we'll just go ahead and do the budget amendment, uh, Thursday, we'll just add that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
While we're touching up the budget, I'd just like to point out to the public that item six and seven do not, uh, represent a, a dip into reserves, those, those are budgeted reserve items that we had set aside for just these sorts of contingencies, so we haven't been touching the bottom line in the reserves with those. Uh, that concludes your report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do have one other thing, it wasn't really an add-on, but when we were talking about purchasing these other vehicles, it kinda made me think of it, uh, several times a year, we do auctions of surplus materials and surplus vehicles and stuff like that. I'd like to work with the Budget Director, and like board approval to work with the Budget Director to, uh, look at putting these items online, uh, on, online auctions, and, uh, Oaklusa County's done that, we could possibly, uh, tap on their shoulder and see how it's done and how it came out for them, but I, we all know about eBay and the different, uh, venues that are out there might, might raise our bottom line when we, uh, do these auctions, so.
Mr. Chairman, is, Commissioner Cole had mentioned that to me, and Mr. Spencer wants to speak to it, that's, the, the clerk of the court's responsible for the surplus property, and I think they were looking at that.
And we're, yeah, we're checking with Oaklusa County, uh, at the end of last week, we started to check with them, I think they just started it over there from what word got back to us on, but, uh, we're gonna check into that and see if we can do that.
Okay, sir. Would you bring us back a report on that, when you've got your arms around it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, public forum, anybody from the public? Seeing none, hearing none, we are adjourned.